... o'clock and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission order.
Oh, sure.
The first item on our agenda is approval of the February 5th, 2013 Agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Move and approve for the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Puls, we have an agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on January 8th, 2013. Any comments, corrections to those minutes? There are none, look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's financial report for December 2012, staff?
This is Anderson and staff. You can see this is through the end of December of 2012, which would be halfway through the year, so it'd be about 50% of the year. You can see the majority of the line item expenses are at or near the 50% mark. Some of them are at 100% because they're paid out once per the year. So we're pretty much in line with where we're supposed to be.
Any questions for staff? Now look to receive and place those on file.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is oral presentations. This is for anybody in the audience who'd like to speak regarding anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda items. First item on our agenda is a hearing for a rezone. Time is now 4:02 and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Keston Associates on the behalf of CNM Enterprises, Inc. to rezone 1943 Plymouth Avenue from R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District to C2 Commercial District for the purpose of expanding the existing park, excuse me, Taco John's parking lot located adjacent to the east at 1620 Port Road. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by registered mail on January 25th, 2013." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
I saw move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we ask that you come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking in the microphone. Staff report?
This is Grandma Staff. The applicant is proposing to rezone the existing property, which currently does have a home on it, to C2 Commercial District, which would allow for the expansion of the existing adjacent commercial parking lot at Taco John's. The rezone would not appear to have a negative effect on the area as long as the use was adequately screened from the existing residential uses to the west. The area is comprised of commercial uses along La Porte Road with residential uses to the west. Wouldn't appear to have a negative impact on traffic as this would be creating additional parking. The property is zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District, has been zoned as such since 1969. Properties to the east along La Porte Road are zoned C2 and M1 Light Industrial, while the properties to the west, those neighborhoods are zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District. The applicant currently owns the property in question, which does have that house on it. The applicant would tear the house down in order to expand the parking lot of their business adjacent to the east. That property currently has 27 stalls on it, which is in conformance with the current parking regulations, but the applicant would like to add additional parking for its customers. Also, the applicant may expand the building as well. This zoning area does have a mix of uses with La Porte Road corridor having mainly commercial uses. West of La Porte Road, you'll find mainly residential neighborhoods. Directly to the west of this property are residential homes, so if the rezone were approved, screening would be required per the zoning ordinance. Also, the use would encroach slightly towards the residential area to the west. However, there are properties along La Porte Road to the north that appear to similarly encroach towards the west as well. The Money &amp; More Store about a block north does appear to be the same distance towards the west as this request, and also the Knights of Columbus about two blocks north does appear to go further to the west than this one as well. Based on the fact that the parking lot would be expanding closer to the nearby residences and no buildings, and the fact that the La Porte Road corridor is mainly comprised of commercial uses, this request would not appear to be out of character with the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rezone request, as it would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would appear to be a logical expansion of existing commercial use, and then subject to the following conditions. One, that an effective visual screen, including a six-foot solid fence and landscaping, is erected along any bordering residentially zoned property. And two, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? There are none. Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the rezone request? Feel free to turn on the microphone. Just right there.
My name is Judy Reisner, and this is my husband Carl Reisner. We live at 1936 Howard. We adjoin Casey's, which now has a chain link fence and then slats in there to kind of make it solid. We still get a lot of their trash. We get trash from Taco John's all the way down the alley, and we're forever cleaning it up. They have a dumpster there that will wake us up any time of the day or night. The neighbor directly adjacent to this property on Plymouth has irregular hours. She works days and nights. She drives back and forth to Cedar Rapids, and she works, like I say, day and night. And she can't tolerate the noise that comes from there. In the middle of the night, you could have couples, and then this has happened, that they have argued and run over to her property trying to get in her backyard to escape police, and they've been chased out. But this is ridiculous, and we have enough problem with commercial without expanding it anymore. And when they empty the trash cans, the truck picks it up and then it goes boom, 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 and makes a terrible, terrible noise. And if they put that parking lot any bigger, they're going to move that trash can back, which would be right behind our property and right beside her property. We don't need any more noise, and we don't need any more...
Trash.
Trash. Go ahead.
I even put up a garbage can by my back garage right on the alley, and it says on there what it's for. But they're too lazy to take the lid off, I guess. It gets real disgusting.
And we already have a lot of traffic going down the alley from Taco John's. They have parking on the alley side where they have the drive-in, but that's hardly ever used. And I personally have never seen the parking lot full, ever. And I do have a statement from Jada. She has had to be at work at 2:30 today. If you want to listen to her telephone message, I'll play it for you.
Anybody like to listen to that?
She is very upset about this thing, and if it does happen to go through, she would like about an eight-foot solid fence at least surrounding all of our property so that their trash and their noise stays where it's at. There's no way we can cancel all the noise, and there's no way that we can reduce the impact it's going to have on our property values if this goes through. We already have 20 feet from the Money &amp; More that adjoins our property on the other side of the street. But on that side of the street, or on that street, Howard Street, we have 20 cars parked on both sides of the street. I have tried to get them to make it parking one side only, and they never respond. So we've got cars on both sides. We've got a car over here that wants to come through, and a car back here that wants to come through, and they can't make it because it's not wide enough for two cars to go through with two cars parked. That's irritating in itself. The noise is irritating. Casey's went 24 hours a day. We've got it all day, all night. And Taco John's is open most of the night. I don't know what time they close. I don't go over there very often. But I know that Jade is, the noise that she's getting now is bothering her trying to get some sleep. And if they move that trash can back, it's going to be even that much more mess for us to clean up. And if we left all the trash out there, nobody would want to live there. So I hope that you will deny this request.
Right. Likewise.
Do you want to listen to Jade's?
This is Cox. I'm just curious, this Jade, what's her address?
My name is Reisner.
No, the woman Jade you're speaking of?
Jade Tierney lives at 1937, or 1935, I think it is.
Plymouth?
Yes.
Right next to?
Right next to 1943.
So right next to the proposed house that's going to be torn down?
Right.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind listening to her message.
Do you want to, well, I'll get it on here. I don't know what you want me to do.
How do you go about doing that?
I don't either.
If you can play it with a microphone, just hold it up next to that.
Okay. She was going to write something down, but she has worked so much overtime that she forgot it.
We have a chain link fence all the way around our property, including the alley across from this proposed package. And the satchels. I go out and pick it up when I can.
I'm addressing this to the City Council since I cannot be present today for the four o'clock meeting due to my work schedule, and this is about the letter I received in the mail a couple weeks ago concerning the Taco John's. I request if this does need to happen, and happens, that there would be, next to my property line, because I live right next to the house that's going to be bulldozed down, that you guys have a seven, eight wooden solid fence so I can have my privacy and to help keep the noise out and to help keep the trash from coming into all of our yards. It can be hectic at times with the things going on at Taco John's, and I believe all of us citizens of Waterloo deserve our privacy and to make things the best for all of us. So I would request not a chain link fence, but have to have a seven, eight wooden solid fence going across all the property lines to keep my privacy and the other neighborhood's privacy. I appreciate if you would take my concerns. My concern's very important. Thank you. I send this message. To reply to it, press 8 to delete.
That's all she had time to record today, but we're just inundated with commercial now, and we just don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Grandma Staff. The zoning ordinance actually does require a six-foot solid fence, so they couldn't do chain link or anything like that. If the commission so wants to, they definitely could add a condition if you want to make it an eight-foot. That's certainly up to the commission. But the ordinance does require a minimum six-foot tall solid fence.
How do you keep the noise down? Well, at least it would be an alternative. I think that that's what we're looking at is what kinds of alternatives would we have?
Go ahead.
Morris, I live two or three houses from these folks. My direct concern is speaking to the property of 1935 Plymouth, which will be the adjoining property if that's allowed to expand. Two, three years ago, this lady or whoever purchased 1935 Plymouth. And within two, three, four months, those folks completely rebuilt that home. They put in rough vinyl siding. They gutted the insides and rebuilt it. They put down a new cement drive, a new garage, enclosed backyard with a four, five-foot And I would hate to have them experience a parking lot right up against their property. I don't think that such a thing would be justified after all the months that's been. I am sure being put into that, but 1935 residents, I think they deserve more consideration than having the property of 1943 turned into a parking lot. We have a situation in our neighborhood, block to the south across Ridgeway, there's a vacant ex-shopping center. And I understand there's plans to refurbish that, to rebuild it. And I think that this CNM Enterprises would do good to move their taco business to that new shopping center, if that takes place. That property is commercial, of course, and be a great place for them to relocate their business if the development takes place on that property. Even if it doesn't, there's acres of parking, one block to their side. But my main reason for being here is to point out the fact that there was some tremendous amount of money put into that home. And I think they should be allowed to experience a nice, quiet home life as opposed to more parking, more traffic. And like the Reisners stated, we do have traffic up and down the alley from that particular business now. And with a larger parking lot, I would assume that we'll see an increase in traffic. I'll say it one more time. The amount of money that was put into that home at 1935, they don't deserve to have a parking lot built on top of it. Every yard has fences or whatever they might have to do to satisfy the commission.
Thank you.
I have a question for the staff. I live near that neighborhood, about three blocks, so I have a couple things that I would agree with Mrs. Weisner, but I have a question. Taco John's, why do they want the extension of the parking lot? Because I go by there, and I don't see the business over there as much. And I know the larger parking lots like McDonald's and the other businesses across the way to me seems to make more sense because it's away from residential, and they're a little bit larger chains. But I'm kind of curious as to why they wanted the parking lot. Can anybody address that? Okay.
I'm Kirk Ashleman, Chief Officer with Keston Associates. We were contacted, contracted as their representative for CNM to do a site survey on this site for title work, as well as to turn around and make this application for a rezone because they recognize they can't do anything until this is rezoned. Yes, they are interested in potentially what they could do to expand the business. That's going to mean spending more money on that facility. It raises the tax value. So specifically, at this point in time, I know he wants to expand the parking lot. He's interested in what he could do to add to the building. But there's, until we get past this point, there's no point in even discussing what we're going to do, because we haven't, there isn't any room to do anything without it. Am I making myself understood there?
I do. And if it does expand, would that have to go back for like a site plan?
Yes.
If they want to, so, okay. And I do have a question, if you can answer on the site. When it comes to the trash, I know with other businesses, their trash facilities have to be fenced in completely, and I know some that have solid wood fence. Is that not the case with Taco John's?
It currently is not.
Is that an ordinance?
No. And that's one of the things that I have discussed with the owner, is that, with staff, I kind of joked about the fact, could we use part of the fence that's already over the property line? And recognizing that we're going to be looking at at least a six-foot fence and probably an eight-foot privacy fence along that west line, and at the same time, build what is considered a dumpster enclosure. I will say, I do understand fully, and it's typical for being in the neighborhood of commercial development, that the commercial work, as far as solid waste pickup, gets covered right in the middle of the night, because that's when nobody else is there. And so, yeah, and I've heard them myself, that truck pulls in there at 2:00 in the morning and hooks on, and they want to make sure everything's out of it, so they bang it two or three times before they set it back down. As far as the garbage goes, all I can say is, I know they have tried to do their best to keep what they can picked up. A lot of that falls back to local staff. That's part of the reason the facility over on Broadway got closed, was issues with adequate staff here in town. So I don't know if I can answer any other questions.
I guess mine is just if we, I'm hesitant to, I'll be honest, I'm a little hesitant to move forward on the parking lot, because from what I'm understanding, we put the parking lot in first, but the long-term projection of the owner is he wants to expand the size of the building, but we have to do the parking lot first. And I know there seems like there's a lot of...
No, okay.
Because we are by residential area.
Okay, what I am stating, we're not talking about doing the parking lot first or anything else. If the rezoning does not happen, we can't, there is no way to do any expansion, period. Do I make myself understood there?
I do. But if we rezone that area into commercial, then, but is that the intention of the owners? If that is rezoned and they can expand the parking lot, then they would come back for a site plan revision and then expand the building and increase the business?
They can't even expand the parking lot without coming back with a site plan.
I understand, but is that, all I'm asking, is that the intention of the owner? Is this like the first step? I mean, are there future plans?
Correct.
So they do want to expand the size of the...
The facility completely. It's not just, I want that understood. It's not just the parking lot. But until we know we can work with that additional space, we don't even know how much room we're going to have to work with. Right now, that building sits in there as tight as they could make it. There are some things that could be done dimensionally. When we actually did the site existing conditions survey, we found out that parking-wise, they probably could have gained about six, eight more parking spaces if they had just slid the building five feet further north towards the alley. It would have repositioned everything to a more advantageous point. That wouldn't have changed any of the conditions we're talking about. I guess, in support of the issue, I guess I'd have to say, I realize there's issues with, I've done community development work all my life, and there's always going to be an issue when you get residential right next to commercial. And so, myself having lived right next door to Quick Star on Broadway for over a decade, and yes, the rate at which people go down the alleyways and everything else, there's no excuse for it, but I don't think we're going to change society on that score.
Any other questions for the applicant's representative? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, this is Grandma Staff. I was just going to throw out the option again when it comes to the dumpster enclosure. I mean, if the commission wants to add that as a condition of approval, they certainly can, that it's required to be an enclosed dumpster area. So, and then Lynn, I think you mentioned something about it coming back for a site plan approval. It's zone C2, so it wouldn't necessarily come back to the commission. It would come to city staff for, and just through the necessary permitting process. But it would be reviewed by staff and building inspections, but it wouldn't come back before the commission.
Okay.
Yep, one more quick comment?
I was going, should have mentioned before many times, and it's ironic that as I was leaving home, I had to go up the west end of the alley. There was a semi delivering product to the taco building that invariably, in order to line up the back of the semi to their back door to deliver products, they pull across, they park the tractor, and today it was part of the trailer. They were blocking the alley, and this happens occasionally, most usual when the products begin to deliver by a semi. And one more thing, I'll quit talking. So far, for the past, at least three winters, whoever they have cleared their lot as it is now, they will push no, and because whoever owns it, when they first bought it a few years ago, they paid the section of the alley from their back property line to the port. And many people think that that alley is part of their present property. And in the winter, they push... And in the winter, they pushed the snow up in a pile where we don't have access to our alley. There's all but two homes on Plymouth and Holland. Our access is the alley. That's where our garages are. And they piled their snow up in the alley. I just called them our last snow. I called them. I walked down there two different times, two different years, and I realized I haven't made their management remove the snow, come back, cleared the alley up. The first year, my next door neighbor and myself, we got pretty good size snow block. We went down and cleared the alley after the people there done their snow removal, blocked the alley with the snow.
Anybody else like to speak for or against this rezone request? See none, look for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or recommendation.
Make a motion that this request be tabled.
There's a motion on the floor to table the rezone request.
Dustin, do you, is that predicated on some other information that you want to get so that we can be better prepared to vote on it next time? And if so, what would that be that you need?
Yeah, well, I think coming to the meeting, I was intending to vote in favor of the rezone. And then after hearing all the requests, or all the concerns by the neighbors, I guess I'd like a little more deliberation time myself. I don't feel comfortable with approving it. It sounds like, at least from the immediate neighbors there, that Taco John's hasn't been the best neighbor. So.
I'll go with Dustin Cox. I feel uncomfortable. I don't live far from there, and I just don't see the amount of business to warrant that one, with the concerns. And I think that I would be comfortable with the table and to find out if we can get some things resolved and maybe, you know, we want to expand business. Yeah, I'm all for business, but I think we have to be considerate of the neighborhoods. Because I think in the past, we've had concerns where we've had attorneys and residents come up and say, part of when you own a home, it's the quality of where you live. And that has been brought up several times our commission. So I think in fairness, since that was residential to begin with, I think, I agree, if we can table it to maybe find some workable situation so that we can be respectful to the residents, but also work with Taco John's, that's your looking at. I would be supportive of that.
I'd look at what the staff's recommendations are, though, is to put up a fenced for noise barrier. I understand it's not going to be perfect, as well as the possibility of a dumpster enclosure. Those things are, you know, and increasing the parking lot would also allow for the ability to help with the snow removal where they're going to put the snow. Those are the concerns I've heard from this, from the people today. This is a business, ongoing business, that if it's left the way it is, it's going to be business as usual. I don't think the problems are going to necessarily change. So we have the opportunity today to try and help, help the residents by doing these.
This is Anderson with staff. I don't know, Kirk, if you know, is there a specific hurry that tabling would damage this by the applicant? Do you know, or?
I know they're looking at, when is construction season going to start? Right now, the work market, as far as doing construction work, is in favor of those wanting to do work. I don't know how long it's going to last. I don't know what, I've talked with them a little bit about the other store on Broadway. I don't know what their decision's going to be. I know what other businesses have done, and it's going to be their decision. I know, at this point in time, the discussions I had with them, they want to upgrade things and make a better impact, but...
Would it be possible for you to have some kind of a neighborhood meeting where you could get some of the neighbors together and talk about some of the things that Taco John's would like to do that would impact the neighborhood and the community so that they felt more comfortable about having a new parking lot put in?
Feeling I got right now is that they don't want it there, so he's making a suggestion that we move three blocks out, the entire business, so.
One block.
Well, the point is, we need to sell it and move it. So what's going to go in there? Grab a liquor store?
Well, we have a motion on the table to table this item, yeah.
Was there a second?
There was not a second.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded to table this rezone request, and I'm going to do a roll call vote on that.
Cox?
Yes.
Whitehead?
No.
Tackett?
Yes.
Gufferson?
No.
Mehe?
No.
The motion to table the request, it was denied, so we're back to reviewing the request and trying to move forward from there.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the approval with the following conditions, changing the six-foot fence to an eight-foot solid fence, and the conditions that the staff has recommended, the other, the remaining two, with that change.
Yeah, the dumpster enclosure?
And include a dumpster enclosure.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, to approve the rezone request with the staff recommendation, or the staff conditions of an eight-foot solid fence along the property line. The site plan meets the city codes, and then, as well as a dumpster enclosure. Put that to a roll call vote again.
Whitehead? Tackett? Gufferson?
Yes.
Mehe?
Yes.
Cox?
No.
The rezone request passes, that'll move on to city council for their review. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it's another hearing. It's a site plan amendment. The time is now four thirty-nine PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Keston Associates on the behalf of Blackhawk Contracting and Development for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of up to six new single-family homes generally located along Madison and Monroe Streets, west of Idaho Street. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "Hi Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and area photo is mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself with name and address. And members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Grandma Staff. The applicant is proposing a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District, which would allow for the construction of six new single-family homes. The surrounding north, south, and west is Zoned R2, all residential neighborhoods, and to the east is the Highland Elementary School. Three of the lots would have access from Madison Street, while the other three would have access from Monroe Street. It would not appear that adding three homes to each street would negatively affect the traffic conditions in the area. Now, the property in question is Zoned R1 RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District, and was zoned as such back in April of two thousand and eleven. Previously, the property was Zoned R2 One and Two Family Residence District. The city of Waterloo currently does own the property in question, which was formerly the location of Francis Grouse School. Now, that school closed some years ago, and the city did take ownership of that property back in two thousand and ten, in order, in order to demolish the school and market it for residential development. The school was demolished just this past summer of two thousand and twelve. Once the city acquired the property, it was rezoned from R2 to R1 RP. The city did this in order to protect, to protect the neighborhood and require any development to go through the site plan amendment process to provide the city with plans on how the lots were going to develop, such as house style, number of stories, garages, et cetera. This also gives the public a chance for input into the proposed development. The applicant, who also developed the single-family homes directly to the west, is proposing to purchase the land from the city to develop six new homes. The site plan does show six lots. As I noted, the three homes would be on Madison, and three homes would be off of Monroe Street. The lots would vary slightly in size, ranging from seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven square feet up to eight thousand nine hundred and eleven square feet. They would also have widths ranging from sixty to seventy-four feet. The R1 RP district does have a minimum lot size requirement of nine thousand square feet per lot, as well as a seventy-five foot minimum lot width. However, the RP designation does allow for flexibility in its yard requirements, stating that the underlying zoning district in which the development is located shall not apply, except that the required yard shall be compatible and/or similar to adjacent properties provided around the boundary of the development. The surrounding area is Zoned R2, which does have a minimum lot size requirement of six thousand square feet, and a lot with requirement of only fifty feet. Therefore, it would appear that the proposed development would in fact be compatible with the adjacent properties. When this property was rezoned to R1 RP in two thousand and eleven, it was done so with the condition that the development be highly scrutinized to provide a higher level of design and livability. Items to be scrutinized include the design of the home for curb appeal, number of stories, setbacks, house size, garage, fencing, et cetera. Given the fact that the area is zoned appropriately and has the necessary infrastructure to support this development, the project would appear to be a good use of this otherwise vacant property and would be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Therefore, staff is recommending the site plan amendment be approved, as it would have a positive impact on the area by developing a current vacant property. The request would be in conformance with a comprehensive plan. It would be a good infill development that would utilize existing utilities and services, and the request would appear to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance, and then subject to the following conditions. One, that the site plan meet all applicable city codes regulations, including but not limited to parking, drainage, flood plan regulations, et cetera. Two, that the submitted house designs are compatible and exceed the design features, extras of existing homes to uplift and provide new excitement to the surrounding neighborhood. Three, that the development includes either an attached or detached garage on each lot to be built simultaneously. And four, that the lot layout allow for garages to have access from Madison and Monroe Streets to avoid further alley extensions, since the option of street access is available.
Questions for staff? Any none in the audience, or anybody like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
Hello, my name is Michael Dent Senior, and I live at three twenty Monroe, right in the middle of Monroe that faces the empty area. And I'm in the neighborhood, and I agree we need houses there, but I do have a complaint on the supervision of the work that actually goes on. Because the last house they built across the street from me, I had, the house had been built two years, and there was a water main leak to my home. And I got a letter from the city saying that, and I'm sure everybody that lives in Waterloo has had letters talking about insurance companies that want you to pay a few dollars to cover if your water main breaks. But anyway, I had a water main leak, and I searched, and since there was no homes across the street before, the total bill was like four thousand six hundred dollars. And as I was getting that work done, I was made aware that my water main was damaged two years earlier. And nobody notified me, and the city states that it's our responsibility and our line. So I don't see how this work is being enforced, you know, because I found out like after the fact that, you know, my personal property was damaged, repaired. So that meant I had no control over warranties for work or anything. And as a homeowner, I've been a homeowner for thirty-three years. And so now, it's time to build other houses in that neighborhood. So I'm not, and I'm sure any neighborhood that's having houses built would feel the same way. Who supervises that kind of work? I've talked to the contracting company, and they explained to me that even though I wasn't at home, all they had to do was knock on my door. I mean, everybody works, but it's not, how could I agree to have other houses built So I'm here, kind of complaining, my neighborhood, they're not, I mean, they would complain too, because their houses were built the same year. I just got a letter from one of those insurance companies, and they have information provided to them from the city, like saying that my property lot, my property pipes were installed before nineteen fifty-nine. They don't even have the correct, you know, information, but it's just, if the city says that we're responsible, I don't have a problem with being responsible, but how can we be responsible for something we have no control over?
Is there somebody that you would talk to? Yeah, Water Works.
Yeah, we'll definitely check in with Water Works on this. I'm not familiar with the process for how this works, so we'll check into that.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request?
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. We need some comments at the tech review committee meeting. Normally, the engineering department doesn't typically support alley creation, but in this particular case, we already have an alley extending over halfway through the block, and we feel it would be appropriate to extend the alley entirely through the block. It makes it easier for snow removal and maintenance. Most of the equipment that's used these days for that is pretty large. It's also very consistent with all the other blocks in that neighborhood. They all have alleys running through the middle. And the developers here, but they have indicated that, at least to me, that they're okay with that. So we would recommend that item number four be modified to have an alley put in that will make it easier for maintenance and snow removal.
Kirk Ashleman with Keston Associates. I'm basically here just to answer any technical questions as far as regarding representation for Blackhawk.
Any questions for the applicant's representative?
The initial site plan we submitted, there's actually seven lots. One of the neighbors to the west had requested some additional property, and we tried to meet that request. At this point in time, I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but the only way we could make it work was if we only, he was requesting fifteen feet, and five feet was as much as we could do without destroying the whole development. So initially, there were eight lots, and now we're down to six buildable sites. The site plans we've submitted represent the type of homes that have been built in the same kind of project in the past. The two existing homes in that block, they actually... The two existing homes in that block, they actually took three lots and split them into two, and there's only...the two corner lots are the only place a house that size will fit. The rest of them will have to be slightly smaller than the two existing ranch homes. But that would allow for street-side garage outlets on all of them, so they don't have to use the alley.
Questions for the representative, the applicant's representative? Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan, or excuse me, site plan amendment request? Seen none, look for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The hearing is now closed. Back to the commission for discussion. This is Whitehead. This is more of a, I guess, a clarification for staff. With Mr. Thorson's comment on the alleys on number four, can that just be removed from the conditions? Or maybe this goes back again? Is it the plan to have the front, the access to the garages off of Monroe or Madison Streets?
This is Anderson with staff, and obviously, we have a little difference of opinion between planning and engineering on this particular matter. And I was just thinking that one way to word it would be the lot layout allow for garages to have access from Madison and Monroe Streets to allow the option of alley extensions, since the option of street access is available. And leave the final decision up to the city council, I guess, is what I'm thinking. That will give us a little bit more time as staff to talk, and also to talk with the street department, traffic department, and all them about kind of their opinions as to which one we should go forward with. Obviously, want to give the best design to these new areas, these infill areas for residential as we can, and we probably just need to have some more discussions on that, and that way the commission can move on with this, and we'll move ahead with working with the other departments.
Okay. Any other discussion, or questions on this request? Here none look for motion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan amendment with the following conditions, and the modification from Anderson's comments regarding item four.
Motion on table for approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, subject to the staff conditions and the amendment on item number four related to the alleyway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign that motion carries. This will move on to council for their review. Next item on our agenda is a special permit. This is a request by CSRS Properties LLC for a special permit to establish a non-limited alcohol sales use on premises consumption at 2,000 Hawthorne Avenue. Staff report?
This is Paul with staff. The applicant stopped proposing to open a sports bar and requests that it is granted non-limited status, allowing them to have more than 50% of their sales be from the sale of alcohol. It would appear the request would have a negative impact on the area. The proposed non-limited establishment is located directly north of a protected use, being a residence, and less than 200 feet from another non-limited establishment. Granting, as far as traffic, granting the proposed sports bar non-limited status would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic. As far as zoning history, the site in question is zoned C2 commercial district and has been since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. As far as development and history, the proposed location was previously used as a non-limited bar for the letting for nearly 30 years. The location in question was previously a legal non-conforming bar known as Club 2000, and there was several other names associated with that as well, but ceased operations in mid-2012. According to the new alcohol ordinance, establishments that serve alcohol lose their legal non-conforming status three months after ceasing operations. In this case, more than three months have passed, so the proposed sports bar is required to obtain a special permit for a non-limited alcohol sales use. The applicants have requested non-limited alcohol sales status, as they believe their alcohol sales may comprise 50% or more of their total sales. The applicants have indicated that they are a quote/unquote "sports" bar, and believe that food sales will be a large portion of their business, but have requested non-limited sales status, as they do not know what percentage of the food sales will comprise. Staff has concerns about the proposed location, as it does not meet the setback requirements from both protected uses and other non-limited alcohol sales establishments. The site in question is located approximately 60 feet from the residence to the south, 190 feet less than required. In addition, the site is located 180 feet from other...another non-limited alcohol sales use, 70 feet less than required. Staff would note that the location appears to be unique, and it is that, in that it is located in a commercial corridor along a highway. If the special permit is approved, staff would recommend that the south property line is screened with a six-foot solid fence. The applicants have indicated that this location has been a bar for the last 29 years, and feel their business would be a significant improvement to the area, as they are improving the business, and food sales would be a large portion of their sales. Therefore, staff recommends the request for the special permit to establish a non-limited alcohol sales use for an on-premises, on-premise consumption at 2,000 Hawthorne Avenue be conditionally approved for one year for the following reasons. The applicant has indicated that the establishment would be a quote/unquote "sports" bar with a large portion of its sales coming from food, and the site in question is in a commercial corridor adjacent to a highway and can be screened from the adjoining residential use, with a condition that the south property line is effectively screened with a six-foot tall solid fence. Staff has received a letter of objection from Andrew Martin, owner of the locker room lounge, which is about, I believe, three or four doors east, west, I'm not sure, of the...
West.
Of the site in question. I have passed out the letter to the members, but he is seeking to protect his property. He has noted he is seeking to protect his property and business, noted that the approval of this non-limited status would hurt the value of his property, and noted it is against the current writing of the ordinance.
Any questions for staff? I have one. This is Whitehead. Conditionally approved, what...and I noticed Mr. Thorson in the tech notes asked the same question. You know, I guess I didn't like the answer. I'm asking what happens after a year? You know, how...it says it could...staff could review the request. If there are no issues, it'd be okay, and it would go...it could go back to board of adjustment. I guess, how do we determine no issues? You know, it's kind of a vague answer out there. I just am curious about that, the conditional approval.
There are a number of ways that that could be proceeded, and certainly, the Planning and Zoning Commission could seek to their own, you know, their own restrictions on that. In the past, it's been if there have been any issues that have come to the attention of either the police department or the planning and zoning staff, we would bring it up after one year's time and bring it back to either renew the whole special permit process, going through the planning and zoning commission as well, the board of adjustment, which is probably what would happen. Or if there was no issues, that we could just say, okay, they've passed, you know, conditionally, there've been no issues with either police or planning and zoning, and then just, you know, write up, you know, sign off as a minor, and just let it go from there as a special permit.
Okay.
But if...alternatively, it could be required to come back through the planning and zoning commission and the board of adjustments, if that worked.
I have just a question, not to put you on the hot spot, but I guess I'd have to say, when we pass the ordinances, and it doesn't comply, I kind of agree with Mr. Martin's assessment, that if we allow this, we just got that new ordinance set in, and we're asking for a variation already. And just wondering, you have the one-year condition. I know from the business owner, I would find that very difficult to plan, if I'm not sure if my business is going to be approved a year from now. I was wondering kind of what the reasoning was. Again, not to put you on the spot, but I'm curious why there wasn't an initial denial for the recommendation for denial in the request.
Certainly. One of the issues that we looked at in regards to, obviously, this new ordinance was passed, and it's passed for certain scenarios. This particular use, the applicants have indicated they do plan to be more of a restaurant than a bar. They have indicated, however, they don't know exactly what their sales numbers would be. They expect them to be right around that area of 50%, and they don't know whether it's going to be a 60/40 food or a 40/60 alcohol. And prior to that, this particular location was, to my knowledge, a bar without any kind of kitchen at all. So between the location and the proposal from the applicant, that it would be more of a restaurant-type environment, we feel there are uniquenesses to the request that would justify a conditional approval. However, certainly, it's something to look at, that yes, we did pass that new ordinance, and our goals were to keep alcohol, non-limited alcohol uses out of residential areas. One of the things that staff also looked at is, yes, this is a residential area, but there is proximity to that highway that was put in after the residential area was there. So obviously, we're looking to protect the residences, but this is obviously a commercial corridor as well. So hopefully, that helps you a little as far as our staff's frame of mind when coming up with this recommendation.
Any other questions for staff? Advocate is here?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Would you like to speak, though?
I'm going to speak, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Do you step forward to the microphone? Name and address, please.
Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is...
What's your name?
My name is Andrew J. Martin. I'm the owner of the property, 1918 Hawthorne Avenue in Waterloo. I'm speaking to you today to allow, to protest the request by CSRS Properties LLC for a special permit to allow the establishment of a non-limited alcohol sales use located 2,000 Hawthorne Avenue. As you know, on August 20th, 2012, the city council of Waterloo passed city ordinance number 5126. This ordinance protects my property from the establishment of a new non-limited alcohol sales establishment, due to the fact that the proposed use of this property does not meet the 250-foot setback requirement from protected uses and other non-limited alcohol sales uses. Why should this commission grant CSRS Properties LLC a special permit, and by doing so, override ordinance number 5126? In my opinion, they should not. This ordinance was passed by the Waterloo City Council for a reason. Why now, the first time the ordinance is questioned, should this commission override the ordinance and grant a special permit? This would be a bad and dangerous precedent to start. Excuse me. It is important for this commission to comply with the regulations recently passed by the Waterloo City Council regarding alcohol sales uses, and by granting a special permit to CSRS Properties LLC, this commission will set a dangerous precedent. If this commission grants such a special permit, then any future compliance of ordinance 5126 will be put into serious jeopardy. If one person or corporation can circumvent this ordinance, then another person or corporation could do the same very easily. Why have the ordinance on the books, anyway, if the ordinance that the Waterloo City Council passed just five months ago is going to be disregarded? If this commission intends on enforcing the laws that the Waterloo City Council has passed, then a special permit should not be granted. In closing, I ask this commission not to grant the special permit to CSRS Properties LLC. If you grant a special permit to CSRS Properties LLC, ordinance number 5126 will be compromised, and a bad and dangerous precedent will be set. This ordinance is in place for a reason. Now is not the time to disregard it. If a special permit is granted to CSRS Properties LLC, this commission will put ordinance 5126 in serious jeopardy of ever being enforced. If the ordinance is not enforced now, the first time it is questioned, how will it be enforced the next time, or any time after that? A precedent will be set, and enforcement of this ordinance will be all but impossible. Please think about your request before submitting it to the board of adjustment. The ordinance is in place for a reason. Please don't disregard it. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else like to speak to this matter?
Good evening. My name is Randy Soper. I'm the president of CSRS Inc., LLC. This was a vacant building, and it's been a non-limited bar for over 30 years. I could understand if you were talking about putting a new establishment in the neighborhood, that there has not been one. When we saw this building, it was vacant, and if you go down the corridor, the last 1.5 miles, I enclosed some pictures, I don't know if you guys received them or not, there are multiple vacancies. As you drive into Welcome Waterloo, there's empty building, empty building, empty building. We're trying to refurbish this building. The last tenant of this property had a hand-painted sign on the side of the wall that said Big Daddy's. It was sloppy. It was not professional. It detracted from the neighborhood. We looked at it and thought, well, since it had been a tavern for 30-some years, we talked to the landlord and went with, we would lease it for two years with the option to buy. We're planning on investing money in this. We alone spent, not that this matters, $9,000 on a piece of equipment, just to make the best chicken wings in town, handmade pizzas. Our concern is, it has been non-limited. If anything, it's going to be an asset to the community. In the spring, we plan on painting the building. The parking lot is dilapidated. We're planning on dressing that entire area up, so as people drive through that area, it doesn't look like it's run down and beat down. It will be new, it will be fresh, and we're catering to the community. This is a unique, kind of like a Buffalo Wild Wings of Cedar Falls on a smaller scale in Waterloo. And we have done extensive remodeling. It is a beautiful location. As far as impeding on the competition down the road, if anything, our advertising would probably bring more viable dollars to the area, and certainly would not depreciate its property value. If anything, its property value would go up, not being by vacant establishment. We intended, and we could get a special use with a 50/50, we could get our liquor license that way, but we don't want to sit here and tell you guys, hey, we're going to be 50/50. We know it. We don't know that for a fact. We would love to do that. That is our intention, but we also don't want to be bound by the extra accounting practices that it would labor us with, having to go, okay, this percentage, that percentage, do we sell 10 chicken wings, or do we sell three beers? It is horrible as a business owner, and I'm sure many of you understand, it is tough. But we did agree to doing a conditional one, because we know we're not going to be a problem for the community. We are on a commercial strip, and we're just there to try to create some more business for the community. I could give you the list of local vendors. We live here in Waterloo. We are business people in Waterloo. This is an absentee owner that doesn't even live in Waterloo, saying, hey, my bar that I don't even live here and run is jeopardized by it. That's not the case. We're here to...we've got TVs, we've got cookers. It's designed to be a gemstone, not a detraction.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify a point, please?
Sure.
As for this place being a bar for 30 years, it hasn't been a bar for 30 years. The first liquor license was applied for in 1985. There was three years...it was a bar in 1985, 1986, and 1988, and then from 1989 to 2003, the building was not a bar, it was a pawn shop. So the place has not been a bar for 30 years. It has been a bar for approximately 14 years, 13 years. It's been a bar for 13 years in the last almost 20, 27 years. So half its lifetime, it was not a tavern.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seen none, bring back to commission for discussion.
This is Tackett. I think with all the work that we did to get the ordinance set in place, I tend to agree, I don't know if we want to set a precedent and then undo what we've worked so hard to try to set something. I think if you set it once, you have to make it equal throughout the whole city, so I would be real cautious in approving this.
This is Anderson with staff, and, you know, just to kind of clarify the staff position, I mean, and we had the same concerns, you know, we worked a lot on this ordinance for the city council. It's been amended a couple of times from the initial draft, and so we had the same concerns with setting a precedent at the same time. This one had just closed right before the deadline, so it was very close to that. It really is a commercial corridor with residential nearby, not just in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So we kind of tried to weigh those different factors, and that is why we put the one-year kind of conditional use on there, to basically see how it operates and see that it's going to be a good resident...a good business decision there, an asset, as they're talking about to the area. And that's why we want to put that one year on there to kind of give this a trial, to show that we're not just giving up on the ordinance, but we do want to continue to look at redevelopment of sites that are vacant. And again, this is kind of a unique location with Highway 218 there being in close proximity to the neighborhoods, and obviously, the highway came later, so this is one of the few areas you're going to have that kind of heavier commercial setting next to single-family homes, too, so... So that was why we put the staff recommendation the way we did.
This is Cox. So in a year's time, he's going to have to bring his financial books to staff and you guys are going to look them over, or I mean, what happens?
I mean, as an unlimited, he won't have to bring the financial books to us because he would be approved as an unlimited. Essentially, what we'd be looking at is, you know, are there code enforcement calls there? Are there any complaints? Are there any police actions at the site that are seen to be detracting from the neighborhood? If there are, then obviously, we're going to want to bring it back and discuss those with the applicants and with the commission and Board of Adjustment. If there's not, you know, obviously, the, the commission could put the condition on there that you want to see it regardless. It was kind of our recommendation, if there's no incidents that we're aware of or made aware of after checking with the police and all that, that we would just approve it to, to go ahead. But that's obviously something, if you're concerned with that, you could add as a condition that it comes back to you regardless, to review exactly everything that's happened after a year.
This is Paula Staff. Just for the clarification, the applicants could open and serve alcohol as a limited establishment, being that they have less than 50% of their total sales serving alcohol. However, they're requesting to have more than 50%. Obviously, they've noted that they expect to sell a lot of food, but again, they don't know how much. So they could open and sell alcohol, but as far as, and still be a limited establishment, but as you noted, they would, if they, if they don't receive the special permit, they will have to submit their accounting paperwork, you know, at the end of every year and prove that they are selling more than 50% of food.
Can you remind us again what the penalty would be if, if they remained at 50/50 and they exceeded that?
Well, I believe the penalty would be they'd be shut down and pay certain types of fines.
Citation and potentially...
Yeah, they lose their liquor license and be cited and potentially have to, I don't know what, shut down, but certainly lose their liquor license.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm slow sometimes. You said that they can operate today without any action by us as a limited sales, is that correct?
If they were to sign the limited sales agreement, certainly.
Okay.
ID restaurant.
Right.
Because the restaurant doesn't have those...
Similar to, similar to the Buffalo Wild Wings that he, he mentioned.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
This is Tack. I have a question that maybe needs to go back, but I guess as a business owner, I'm a little confused. If you're doing your business plan proposal, it sounds like to me you want to get a, a non-limited. Why can't we get a limited right now? If you, if you're looking at it like a sports bar and there's other sports bars in the area, don't they kind of figure that into the business plan, that this is what we're going to be? I mean, it sounds like we're going to try it and if we can be more of a bar, let's do it. And I guess I don't understand why there is this uncertainty, because I would think you would kind of want to know, are you going to be a sports bar? Are you going to be a bar bar? Or that's where I'm a little confused. If, if, like you said, if you can open up now as a limited use, wouldn't that satisfy the sports bar satisfaction or ordinances?
And just, this is Paula Staff. Again, that's something that staff has wrestled with. Do we want to approve them as a limited and only to have them come back a year later and be, obviously, their books don't balance and then we have to start going through the enforcement process? And then maybe, you know, does it look like then that they were just trying to cheat the system and for, you know, instant approval? It's something that we have to look, you know, as staff, we've kind of looked at both ways, in fact, that if they come back a year later and they're, you know, their, their books are 60% alcohol sales, does it look like they're, you know, does it look like they're trying to pull a fast one on us? Kind of. But obviously, that's something we have to take, take into effect. Obviously, the applicant indicated that they're, they think they're going to be close, but I mean, maybe they can shed more light on that aspect of it. But from a staff perspective, we kind of advise them that I, you know, there are two ways to go about it. You can go about getting limited now and then later, if you don't balance, you can come back. But it's the perspective of the board, the, you know, the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission, how would that look a year from now if they're not that close to 50/50? So, but the applicant may want to touch base on their sales plan.
Because I have a question on that applicant, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm very clear. It seems like if this, I, I don't want to sound like we're making exception in this case, but I'm thinking, let's say somebody else in the city wants to come in as a sports bar. Will they all have to go through this process? And that's why I'm kind of hesitant. If we put the ordinances the way they are and we're saying we're not sure if they're going to cross the 50/50, well, what about others that want to come in and become sports bar girl? Will they have to worry about that, too? I mean, will they have to come before our commission each time? I guess that's where I will agree with Mr. Martin. I think this is our first time coming through and it sounds like you want to be a sports bar. And I think business, that'd be great if we can, you know, it's a nice clean establishment. It sounds like, you know, you're looking at this very professionally. So as I'm trying to process this, if we're being professional and looking at all the planning involved, if you're going to be a limited sales use, and, and you know, that's already a per for sports bar, I would think that you would have some control as far as working with your employees, working with the owners to make sure they are in compliance. And I guess that's where I'm a little unclear. If we're not sure if we're going to go over, wouldn't you have to figure that in if you knew you were only going to be a limited use?
I'll address the first half and I'll leave the second half to the applicant. As far as what planning has been concerned, you asked, are they all going to have to come through this process? If they are not going to sign the limited agreement stating that they for sure will be meeting the 50% requirement, then they will all be coming for a special permit. If they don't meet the setback requirement, requirements, they will need to go through a special permit and if they don't meet the setback requirements, variance process. In this case, because it was shut down more than three months, they're required to get a special permit if they're a non-limited establishment. So as far as how the applicants plan on, you know, their business plan and how, where do they think they're going to fall as far as what percentage is what, I'll leave that to them and they can illustrate.
When we were planning the business, we weren't quite clear the amount of food. You know, there's no way, I mean, we can predict and, and we can advertise and we can hope they come, per se. But there is no guarantee. What we didn't want to do is invest our time and money, which we have, we put new concrete in, we're putting new windows in, we're dressing it up, we're investing quite a bit. But we didn't want to get into the situation where we did all this with the intentions of selling more and then found out that maybe people didn't like our chicken wings. Maybe they just wanted to drink a cold beer and it ended up being more so than that. Then we would be here fighting for our lives, for our business that we've invested our time and effort in, trying to, again, improve the area that is now becoming rundown. So that's really our thought process. When we came to the staff, we were kind of surprised that this ordinance had been passed. It was just recently an unlimited establishment and maybe we didn't do our homework quite well enough. But the process to get a liquor license in Waterloo is backwards. You have to lease a property. You have to jump through all kinds of hoops. You have to get insurance for this before you can even get approved or even considered to be approved for a liquor license. This puts undue stress on people that are trying to open an establishment. How would you like it if you said, you know what, here's a place that's been a business for 30 years, the previous owner maybe didn't do a good enough job, didn't dress it up enough and didn't put enough time and effort into it, or maybe didn't have the resources. Then you went in there and spent your time and money and then turned around and found out that you couldn't get an answer if you could get a liquor license upfront. Hey, guys, I plan on opening a business here. Here's what I'm planning on doing. Before I sign a lease, before I do any improvements, before I get insurance, before I do all this, why don't you tell me if I can get a license or not? It's completely backwards. And maybe you should address that, but really, we just wanted to do it the right way. We didn't want to come in and say, hey, guys, we're going to do 50/50, we're going to do 60/40, because the fact of the matter is, until we get open and done, we do not know that. We want to, we intend to, our sign says food on it, we've invested in the food equipment, excuse me, and we've invested in some recipes we think the neighborhood's going to like. But that's still, there's no way. If we knew that, then we'd be investing in stocks, we'd be investing in bonds, and we'd be continuous winners every day of our lives. Unfortunately, there's risk in business and that's what we're doing here. We put our money out, we're investing, we're investing in the community. We're asking for a little help from the council to make it a little less strenuous on us as a new business to be successful. And by agreeing to the conditions, we're saying, hey, we understand, you want us to prove it. You want us to show you. The proof is in the pudding, per se. We're willing to do that. We're willing to put up fences, we're willing to fix parking lots, we're willing to paint, we're willing to make this place beautiful. And if you guys went in it, you would agree, it is much nicer than the last location and you will find that people will enjoy it. It's not going to be a rough biker bar. It's, it's, it's very nice. But bottom line, to answer your question in summary is, we don't know.
That makes sense.
We just don't know. We can plan for whatever we want and, but there's no way that we can guarantee it's going to come to fruition.
Eric Schrader, City Planner, I just wanted to clarify. He is correct in that you cannot apply for a liquor license unless you have control of the premises and that control of the premises has to either be by ownership or by lease. The thing that I'm not sure on, it's my understanding, I cannot verify this, but my, it's my understanding that that's a state code requirement, so not a local requirement that we could change. I, I'm, I'm not for positive on that, but that's my understanding, that that's a state code requirement, that to apply for a liquor license, you have to have control of the premises. I think how some establishments, I don't want to say get around that provision, but basically deal with that provision is doing short-term leases upfront that basically are, you know, contingent upon, they'll lease it longer term if they get their liquor license that way. It basically gives them that out if they don't give that liquor license. But you're getting into the in and outs of a private lease agreement between two parties. But yes, you do have to have control, but I think that's a state code requirement.
And thank you for clarifying that.
Just to summarize that, so it's not always the city's fault.
Right.
Did mean to put blame, sorry. Can I stick some?
Yeah, one last comment, quick.
Nevertheless, they should have done their homework. If they would have gone to planning and zoning and asked, they would have told them about this law, because I knew before, I knew in December that they were planning on doing this and I called Eric and he said, yeah, they can't do it, but I haven't talked to anybody. And they didn't talk to anybody until the middle of January, because they tried to get on the council or the one agenda at the end of this month and then they didn't, they had, they had to be approved for the special permit. But in, in my opinion, and in my past, I've, I built a house on Robin Road. It was in the 500-year floodplain. I called them before I purchased the lot and said, can I build a house there? And they said, yes. I've done work at my building and said, can I do this before I contracted out? And they said, what do you want to do? Yes, you can do that and then come back and you get the permit at a later time. So if they'd have done their homework ahead of time, they could have avoided this mess.
I have one question for you. This is Whitehead. The locker room lounge, where's that located?
1918 Hawthorne. It's, if you had that first map up there?
Three buildings down.
Okay. So you're the one, as I'm looking at that map, you're the one who's actually closest to the residences right now? Is that correct?
Well, they're close to the residents also because the back of their lot would...
I understand that.
But I am close to residents, yes.
Yeah, on two of your sides, you have them. Okay.
Yeah, and then right across the street.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions from, from the commission? Not entertain a recommendation?
Well, this is Cox. I, I think we're all very thankful that CSRS is willing to invest in this community and in this establishment. And I think, given the history of this particular building, I think that's the only reason why I would vote in favor of approving the request. So I make a motion to approve the request.
With the conditions?
Yeah, with the conditions the staff has laid forth here.
Okay. Motion on the table to approve the conditional one-year approval with the additional staff condition.
Second.
Given seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
No.
That, I think it carries. Yes. That recommendation request carries. That'll move on to Board of Adjustment for review. Thank you. And next item on our agenda is a vacate. It is a request by Tony Huff to vacate the eastern four feet of the 16-foot utility easement on the parcel for the purpose of constructing two new commercial buildings located at the south, excuse me, northeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and Bismarck Avenue. Staff report?
This is Andera Staff. This is a request to vacate the east four feet of the existing 16-foot sanitary sewer easement at the northeast corner of Ainsborough and Bismarck. Site where the easement is located is Zone C2 Commercial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. To the north and south is existing development, Zone C2. To the east is one and two family residences, Zone R2. And to the west, existing light industrial development, Zone M1 Light Industrial District. An 8-inch sanitary sewer is located within the easement requested to be partially vacated. Just to the west of that is a 29-inch storm sewer located within Ainsborough Avenue right away, along with a four-inch drain tile. To the south of the site, there is a 15-inch storm sewer located within Bismarck Avenue. Applicant is requesting to vacate the east four feet of the existing 16-foot easement located along the east side of Ainsborough Avenue as intersection with Bismarck Avenue, reducing the easement to 12 feet wide. The applicant is requesting the vacate for the purpose of constructing two new irregular-shaped commercial buildings upon the site. Each building has two separate units that the applicant intends to rent out with the anticipation that contractors will utilize the units. Therefore, a total of four separate units will be between the two buildings. Each building is 56 feet wide and in order to properly fit one of the buildings, one of the proposed buildings on the north part of the lot, a portion of the easement would need to be vacated. The dimension of the 75 feet at the north end of the lot is narrower than the dimension at the south end of the lot of 80 feet. That is why the vacation is being requested. Applicant is also requesting that a portion of the easement be vacated so that they are able to move the building further from the alley to prevent it from being hit by passing traffic in the alley. Also, the vacation will allow the applicant to place two parking stalls in front of each unit. Engineering Department has reviewed the submitted request to vacate a portion of the easement and based upon the depth of the sewer, they have indicated that 12-foot wide easement would be sufficient enough if the sanitary sewer needs to be excavated for repair or replacement in the future. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate the, a portion of the sanitary sewer easement be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area.